Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. Welcome to City Hall today. Before our official business, we have two important resolutions. Both will be presented by Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins. And the first is the 2019 Urban Scholars Honorary Resolution. So if anyone would like to join us up here, we would welcome you to do so. And I will turn it over to Council Vice President.
Good morning. One, that's better. Good morning, everyone. My name is Andrea Jenkins. I'm the Vice President of the Minneapolis City Council and so thrilled to recognize the contributions of urban scholars for 2019. And in the past, urban scholars has been a really incredible part of the city's pathways to equity, to really opening the doors to city government and other agencies for young people in our colleges and high schools and universities. So it's really an honor to be able to do this. So a resolution recognizing the contributions of urban scholars. Whereas, and I think the Council President invited folks to come up. Why don't you guys come up? Wow. What a beauty. Beautiful sight. Whereas, urban scholars is a leadership and professional development program where students from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds learn how to navigate today's workplaces while equipping both students and organizations with the tools, experiences, and guidance necessary to shift organizational culture towards an equitable workforce. And whereas the city of Minneapolis provides students with distinctive professional experience focused on gaining essential leadership skills and creating career pathways of positions of influence. And whereas urban scholars establishes a pipeline of experienced diverse professionals for public sector leadership. And whereas on May 22, 2019, the city of Minneapolis inaugurated the eighth cohort of urban scholars made up of 51 culturally competent, collaborative, resilient, and altruistic young talents. And whereas Hebo Abdi, Iklas Abdou Kadar, Miriam Ali, Sahib Ali, Gabriella Ayana, Fatu Berry, Bissrat M. Bayou, Alejandra Behar Renau, why, I'm sorry, Andrei, Andrei, Handra for buttering your last name, but Prishati Behat Nenga, Justin Blake, Mariah Cannon, Hannah Chong, Richard Crenshaw, Alberta Di La Rojas, La Rios, sorry, Laura Garcia, Pete Mantel, Keegan Greeney, Cesar Gutierrez, Araxna Hernandez, Cheer, Yasmin Hershey, Kevin Huin, Daniel Jefferson, Edward Johnson, Kiara Jones, Kalia Lee, Xiang Seer, Stephanie Lopez, Gili Mali, Fatuma Mohammed, Sahara Mohammed, Joseph Manbo, Bo Babalola, Likuwa Indovo, Diana Nguyen, Lee Nguyen. There's more, many more. Haley Norman, Matthew Odamawa, Annie Ortiz, Jessica Osai, Najima Osman, Courtney Overby, Guillermo Perez, So Ben Ronis, Said Sula, Abdou Fata Sumero, Michaela Smith, Padju Tao, Kiana Thomas, Antonio Torres, Liv Williams, La Linda Zhang, Padir Yang, Akira Yano, Natasha, Natasha Yacine, and Amy Zhu. Whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes and appreciates each urban scholar for making significant and lasting contributions to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby proclaim August 14, 2019 as Urban Scholar Day in the city of Minneapolis. As a time to recognize and congratulate scholars on the many contributions made to the city and its communities that the urban scholars of the city of Minneapolis are hereby recognized for their significant contributions, commended for their accomplishments, and offer the sincere gratitude of the mayor and the members of the city council on behalf of the people of this great community. Let's give them a round of applause again. So it's probably too many of you to offer comments, but I would invite the coordinator to say a word or two. Introduce yourself.
Well, as you all know, I'm just immensely proud to know all of you. And it really just, you can hear my voice crackling now because I'm a big sap, but it's been really awesome to see each and every one of you just be in your workplaces and like ask really good questions and really just dive in deep this summer. So thank you for everything. Thank you for the acknowledgements. I do have certificates that have been signed that we can give you out in the hallway, but we're just really grateful. I think if we have folks bunch in, we could take like a bigger picture with everyone. Yeah.
Yeah, come on in. Cassidy, you gonna get in the photo?
Everybody, there you go.
Turn in.
Panorama.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you guys for everything. Thank you.
Thank you to all of these incredible leaders, current and future leaders of our city. The next one is also presented by Council Vice President and a number of our colleagues who all have come up, Councilmember Ellison Cunningham and Worsami. And this is honoring the resistance and liberation of African Americans. And I will turn it over to Council Vice President again as we are joined by these awesome council members.
So thank you, President Bender. And you know, this resolution is honoring August 20, 2019, as the 400th Commemoration of Resistance and Liberation of African Americans in the city of Minneapolis. And I think it's really, really important for us to have this recognition today in light of the tremendous racial upheaval that is really relevant and prevalent in our culture and society right now as we speak. We are in the midst of white supremacists who are creating terror in our communities, in our Latinx communities, in our Black and Brown communities, in our Jewish and Muslim communities. And we know that this is unacceptable. And so as the city of Minneapolis, we want to continuously uplift and acknowledge the role of African Americans certainly, but of all communities of color who contribute to the greatness that is America. And so this resolution honoring and recognizing August 20, 2019, as the 400th Commemoration of Resistance and Liberation of African Americans in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas the Papal Bull of 1452 issued by Pope Nicholas V stated that European nations had the permission of the Catholic Church to colonize the Americas and enslave Africans. And
Whereas Portugal, Spain, and the Netherlands started to bring Africans who were enslaved to Europe, the Caribbean, and the Americas. And
Whereas the British entered the practice in the 19, in the 1600s and brought 20 Africans to the Americas in 1619. And
Whereas Britain's involvement in the slave trade qualified the institution, creating a racial hierarchy that bound enslaved Africans for a lifetime. And
Whereas Minnesota participated in the slave trade by encouraging slaveholders to vacation in this state and invest in Minnesota's businesses. And
Whereas the involvement of slaveholders from the South in Minnesota's economy mentioned that enslaved Africans lived in Minnesota even though it was a free state as designated by the Missouri Compromise. And
Whereas in order to protect the wealth of states like Minnesota and the institution of slavery, the Supreme Court ruled that blacks had no rights by which the legal system had to abide by when enslaved Africans like Dred Scott fought against being illegally held in free states. And
Whereas after the emancipation of slavery, Minnesota continued to mistreat African Americans living in the state through violent and exclusionary practices including terrorizing and lynching African Americans for attempting to produce and sustain employment, wages, businesses, and homes for any other perceived threat. Redlining and destroying African American communities and businesses, moving jobs away from the central cities with the build-out of the freeway system, mass incarceration, and disinvestment in public education. And
Whereas the practices and policies of the city of Minneapolis continue to drive these disparities, making it one of the worst places for African Americans to live in the country. And
Whereas the city of Minneapolis, including its public institutions and private businesses, continue to make profit off of funds from slave labor, slaveholder investment, and continue, continued oppression of African Americans. And
Whereas the current state of disparities is in direct correlation with the institution of slavery that continues to undergird our local and national economy. And
Whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes the extent of the harm done and is taking active steps to reverse and repair the harm by passing the first Racial Equity Action Plan, building out affordable housing, having inclusive economic development policies, and building trust between community and city officials. And
Whereas the city of Minneapolis believes that the remedies to reverse the longstanding disparities must address the extent to which ascendants of Africans who were enslaved have been harmed. And
Whereas the solutions must be transformational in such a way that the city of Minneapolis becomes a place where everyone can thrive, where accountability and mutuality exists between city residents and government, and no one makes a profit at the expense of African Americans or anyone else as a result of their race, their gender, their sexual orientation, or any other way in which people are marginalized. Now therefore let it be resolved
That the mayor and city council do hereby honor and recognize August 20, 2019, as the 400th year commemoration of resistance and liberation of African Americans in the city of Minneapolis, and the week of August 19 to the 24th as the week of resilience.
That the city commits to deepening its work to institute policies and practices that will repair the harm experienced by people of African descent over the last 400 years as a result of the legacy of slavery and racism.
I just wanted to briefly, when I have the opportunity, I like to be able to name into this space about the real life implications and relevance of slavery even today, that my great grandfather was the last person in my family born into slavery. My dad remembers him. So that's how recent it was. And I have a picture of him on my desk as a reminder of how far we've come in four generations and still how far we have to go. And so I still feel it very much so in my bones. It's still very relevant in my life and my family. And so we can think about 400 years, but the actual end of it was still only a few generations ago. So it's very important to name that in this space. So thank you, everyone.
Good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the City Council. I will call this regular meeting of the City Council for August 8 to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Johnson is absent. Pal Masano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Khano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Councilmember Johnson is out on family leave following the birth of his child. May I, are there any amendments to the agenda that we have before us? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our July 25 meeting for acceptance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries and those referrals are made. As we enter into the reports of the standing committees, I'm having a little trouble getting Speaker Management up and running, but Councilor Schrader will help me with that. But if I miss anyone who would like to speak before I fix this, just let me know one way or another. So the next order of business is reports from our standing committees. And we begin with the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Regulatory Services and Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Items number one and two are licenses, as is item number three. Item four is the 2020 license fee schedule, and I will note there's an amendment to that schedule at your seat. Item five are the liquor license approvals, six is gambling license approvals, seven is gambling license renewals, and item number eight is accepting millions of dollars in grants for projects in the city of Minneapolis from the state of Minnesota and the Met Council. With that, I'll move all items except item four, that I'm going to move the amendment to item four in front of you. So perhaps first we should take up the amendment to item four.
So Councilmember Goodman has moved to amend item four with the language that is in front of all of us. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Goodman for her work on this. This is a really great example of someone coming into committee and raising an issue in public testimony and pointing out that something was unfair and the council listening and the Chair of that committee following up on it, and we got to a much more fair result. So it seems like a small thing sometimes, you know, what does a hot dog push cart vendor licensing fee add up to? But for those affected businesses, it's a really big deal and I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
So I will then take up the vote on the amendment first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries. So Councilmember Goodman has moved the agenda with that amended item. Is there any discussion on the other items or that amended one? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Khano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and those items are adopted. The next report is from our Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward eight items for consideration, excuse me, seven items for consideration today. The first three are land sales. The first one is a land sale at 314 36th Avenue North. Second is at 2803 Aldrich Avenue North, and the third is at 1701 Thomas Avenue North. Fourth item is a resolution authorizing a bond issuance for the Madison Apartments at 501 15th Street East. Fifth item is approving the Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Financial Assistance Projects for their 2019 Affordable Housing Incentive Fund. You can see the list of projects there that will be getting support from the county. These are projects that are happening in Minneapolis, and so the, we have to approve them before they go forward. The sixth item is approving the creation of a single-room occupancy shared housing pilot within the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And the seventh item is approving three staff directions having to do with when the city provides financial assistance and what do we do about those who want to use the money to support short-term rental housing projects. And I will move the full report and all items forward for approval.
Sorry, my apologies. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. I'm just going to continue to rely on my neighbors for Speaker Management help. Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Khano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items carry and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from our Intergovernmental Relations Committee, given by the Vice Chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee is forwarding two items today. The first is the Biennial Budget Process Charter Amendment, and the second is the Lodging Tax Rate Adjustment Resolution. Since we do need all 13 members to be present in order to vote on the charter amendment, I move to postpone item number one to our, to our next regular meeting scheduled for August 23rd, and I move the approval of item number two.
Council Vice President has moved to postpone item one and approve item two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Khano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward three items for approval today. The first is a passage of an ordinance prohibiting any use of perk in dry cleaning establishments. The second is passage of a wage theft ordinance. And item number three is approving a council appointment of me to the Violence Prevention Steering Committee, so I will be abstaining from number three. It's a formality to make sure that I can participate on the committee. I move approval of all three items.
Councilwoman Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Actually, sorry, Mr. Clerk. We have two councilmembers who want to speak, and my apologies. Councilmore Fletcher and then Councilmore Pal Masano.
Thank you, President Bender. I just want to express my enthusiasm for voting yes on this wage theft ordinance and thank everybody for your support throughout this process. That has been this very community-driven process. I think it's a very exciting model for the Workplace Advisory Committee to move a set of recommendations forward for labor and community and the workers who are most affected to come together and really share their stories, and then for business to come to us and really share the ways that we could modify the ordinance to minimize the impact on their processes while still capturing the goal of the work that we are trying to do. This is exactly the way labor regulation should happen, and I think it's a really good model. It has been an absolute pleasure working with Councilmember Pal Masano and Councilmember Cunningham on this, and I'm excited to pass this today. And thank you, everybody who's in the room with us.
Councilmember Pal Masano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to appreciate the work that we've done together with Councilmembers Fletcher and Cunningham. And I especially want to thank the stakeholders in the room who've really come to the table and shown up a lot for this. I also want to show my appreciation, all of our appreciation for staff members Brian Walsh and Andrea Nafe for their hard work. Thank you very much. We've heard the stories in this room, outside on the street, of workers in construction, in restaurants, in janitorial services, and other service industries who experience wage theft while working in Minneapolis. Adopting state law and adding elements peculiar to Minneapolis that allow us to provide a clear system instead of a piecemeal series of steps that involve different levels of government are particularly burdensome for those who need it most. We have existing infrastructure at the city to deal with issues locally, and that gives us an ability to amplify the work being done at the state. Most of our efforts here will now conform to state law, and that's important. You know, we've been criticized that it's duplicative and it's more complicated than that. We would not have any ability to enforce the state wage theft law in our city except to direct them to the state. Bringing in the state's language into ordinance becomes important that way. Passing this ordinance will also allow us to work together to make sure that our combined enforcement capacity is as efficient and effective as possible. So thank you for everyone who came to the table, and I look forward to supporting this. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmore Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to echo the gratitude of my colleagues and co-authors on this legislation, Councilmembers Pal Masano and Fletcher. I think that this has been a really amazing example of what happens when you build inside-outside powers together, so inside the system and outside the system. When you have stakeholders like the Workplace Advisory Committee that is made up of small
table, and then the city at one table, for us to be working together, this is truly a model for how the city should be operating and how we want to have a more democratic governing system. And this is a way for us to be able to do that. And so I'm so grateful to have been able to be a part of this work and really appreciate all the stakeholders who have been here through over the last 18 months, continuously showing up, being engaged in the process, being passionate about the work, telling your story so vulnerably, putting yourself out there. That is incredibly powerful. I see that, we see that, and we are grateful for that and for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself in queue just to echo and want to particularly thank the three councilmembers who authored this, but more than anything, to thank the workers who have been pushing for change in our city for so many years. And this goes back to the Working Families Agenda that we set out to do maybe four or five years ago, and we've started slowly checking them off. So thank you for your persistence and your leadership in our community. These victories are those of the workers in our city, and we appreciate you, and we are so thankful to be able to be here, sitting in the seats, to support you and to get these things passed into law. Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in the report, except for item number three, which has 11 ayes, zero nays, and one extension.
Those items carry and are adopted.[714.23][714.23](APPLAUSE) And thank you all for being here. The next report is from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee has four items to bring forward today. One is authorizing a contract with Grandma's Marathon for the Minneapolis Police Department Bomb K-9 Services. Item number two is authorizing an acceptance of a grant from the Minnesota Department of Commerce for the Minnesota Auto Theft Prevention Program. Item number three is accepting the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Academy reimbursement. And the final item is authorizing the Minneapolis Police Department Cooperative Agreement with the Fourth Judicial District Court for Drug Court Program Enforcement. And I'd like to move those items forward.
Councilmember Conno has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 10 items today. Item one is the sidewalk repair and construction assessments. Item two is the 28th Avenue South Bridge Policeman Project, and that's a request for variances from MINDOC, state aid rules. Item three is the agreement with Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for the Eighth Street South Reconstruction Project. Four is the 33rd Street East, 35th Street East, Hiawatha to Minnehaha Avenue Street Reconstruction and Resurfacing Project, and it's a construction services agreement. Item five is the University of Minnesota Protected Bikeweight Project and Appropriation Increase. Item six is the Engineering Services Agreement with Black &amp; Veach for the Friedley Softening Plant Line Slaker Replacement and Storage Upgrade Project. Item seven is a contract amendment with Black &amp; Veach Design and Construction Engineering Services for the Tunnelled Water Main under the Mississippi River in conjunction with the 10th Avenue Bridge Project. Item eight is a contract amendment with Kinley Horn Associates for the Hennepin Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. Item nine is the Memorandum of Understanding with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency regarding investigations and other operations in city-managed public right-of-way. And the final item, 10, is the bid for the 10th Avenue Southeast River Bridge Rehabilitation Project. I move all items as submitted, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next is the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward five items for approval today. The first is the denial of an appeal for a property at 2542 through 2554 Blaisdell Avenue as well as 11026th Street West. Also, I want to direct my colleagues to the findings of fact for that item. Number two is the approval of a rezoning for 11026th Street West as well as 2542 Blaisdell Avenue. The third is the approval of an alley vacation located at 620 Ninth Street Southeast. And the fourth is the passage of an ordinance regulating the drive-through facilities. And the fifth is the approval of zoning code text amendment work plan. I'll move all items for approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. I put myself in queue. I have a question or statement on item two, and then I just wanted to draw my colleagues' attention to a staff direction that you have in front of you on item four. So on item two, I just want to clarify, I'm sure that it is correct in other places, but the description here describes the building as a six-story building, but the approved plan coming through Z&amp;P was for a five-story building. And we were quite specific in the action that we took at the committee meeting, but I just want to make sure that that is corrected where it needs to be, and may be a question for the clerk or even for CPED staff, so I'm...
Madam President, in the absence of CPED staff to speak directly to the staff report, I can assure you that we'll check the committee's report, and we'll make sure that the final action brought forward for approval by the mayor includes the restrictions that were approved at committee.
Okay, thank you. And there may have been a discrepancy, just to clarify, between item one, where we made specific changes, and item two, which we approved as a rezoning separately. Okay, thank you. So maybe I will just, to be safe, if it's okay with the clerk and others, direct staff to reconcile those two items and ensure that item two reflects the action taken in item one. So I'll see if there's any discussion on that item or that staff direction. Councilmember Gordon has seconded the staff direction. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That staff direction carries, and then that brings us to item four. In that staff direction, I'll pause and see if there's any questions, but I'll just describe briefly. So this is on the drive-through ordinance that Councilwoman Goodman and I started together a number of years ago. This is restricting future drive-through facilities in our city. We've already restricted drive-throughs over the years in a number of ways through pedestrian-oriented overlay districts and other tools, so there's a map included in the materials that shows the places where drive-throughs are allowed today, and it's actually quite limited today, but this just says that we will not have any new drive-throughs in the future. There is one application that I understand is, has been submitted and is complete for a drive-through facility. It may have other issues, but the staff direction clarifies that the intention here is to not apply this new ordinance to projects that have been submitted and have a complete application into staff. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I do support this item to really further sort of restrict building new drive-throughs in our city. I do want to acknowledge, you know, some issues that have been brought up by the disability community and just confirm that we're not closing any of the current drive-throughs, but rather regulating where new ones can occur. And so just want to make sure that we are recognizing all parts of our community and really trying to make sure that everyone has access in the city of Minneapolis.
Great, thank you, Council President. The question that is correct, so this would say we, there are no new drive-throughs allowed in new locations. We did, my staff along with CPED staff met a number of times with members from the Disability Advisory Committee and the committee itself. They had asked for some exemptions that, in the end, we discussed at committee and decided not to move forward with them, in part because of the sort of limited location where drive-throughs are allowed today. And if you look at the pattern, I think it would be difficult for us as a city to make the commitment that we could hold that pattern into the future as we look at zoning code amendments that will come as we implement the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, because they're in sort of an irregular pattern along our corridors. So the committee decided not to move forward with any exemptions for particular uses, but we did have a lot of good discussions with the Disability Advisory Committee. They had some other ideas that were really more falling under federal ADA law that the city wasn't able to implement locally, but I think, you know, that dialogue is still open. Their idea was how we could encourage businesses to be more accessible and to create opportunities to, you know, for delivery services or other ways for folks to be able to have access to retail needs and those kinds of things. Happy to answer any other questions or see if there's any other comments on item four. Seeing none, any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? I don't see any.
Madam President, just so I'm clear, the directive on number four will be included in this vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
No on one, aye on the remainder.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
No on one, aye on the others.
Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in the report, except for item number one, which has 10 ayes and two nays.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That completes the committee reports. The next order of business is the Notice of Ordinance Introductions, and we have two notices to make today. First, we have notice from Councilmember Fletcher for introduction at the next regular meeting. The subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Code to create a new section on micro wholesaler food licensing. Second, we have a notice from Council Vice President Jenkins for introduction at the next regular meeting. The subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Code to add provisions related to the applicability of the city's small and underutilized business program in city contracts. Are there any questions on either of those notices? Seeing none, those notices are given, and no further action is necessary. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. Pursuant to notice, Council Vice President Jenkins and Councilmember Cunningham moved to introduce, give first reading, and refer to the Transportation and Public Works Committee the subject matter of an ordinance amending provisions in Title 18 of the Code related to parking of overweight vehicles and commercial vehicles. Are there any questions on that introduction? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the subject matter will be referred to the Transportation and Public Works Committee in the next cycle. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have three honorary resolutions on the agenda, including the two that were presented prior to this meeting. First, we have the honorary resolution recognizing and commending our former, recently former Deputy Director of CPED, Chuck Lutz, for his many years of public service in the city of Minneapolis. And that resolution was presented at the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee this cycle. Second, we have the honorary resolution recognizing the 2019 class of, the class from 2019 of our urban scholars. And finally, we have the honorary resolution that honors and recognizes the 400 years of resistance and liberation for African-Americans in the United States. I'll call the vote on all three resolutions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Those resolutions are adopted, and I'd be happy to see if there's any comments from councilmembers on those resolutions. Seeing none. That brings us to announcements, and I'll see if there's announcements from councilmembers. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is less of an announcement and maybe some commentary on our resolutions. The resolution honoring the 400 years of resistance of African-Americans comes on the heels of this council passing one of the most comprehensive strategic and racial equity plans at our last city council meeting to really ensure that the city of Minneapolis is moving forward on closing the disparities that are plaguing our city and state. And so I'm really, really proud that we are, that we just adopted that resolution. I also wanted to just recognize the passing of a great American writer, Ms. Toni Morrison, who has written about the African-American experience in this country from a deeply perceptive and interior space that really documents, I think, even though her work is fictional, really documents the interior lives of African-Americans and all Americans in our country as we grapple with race and racism and culture and slavery and its aftermath in our culture and society. And so in honor and recognition of her passing, I just wanted to read a small excerpt from her book, Beloved, which was a movie that starred Oprah Winfrey and just a powerful narrative of African-Americans in this country. And this excerpt is about its main character, Baby Suggs, and when she goes into a place called a clearing. "Baby Suggs, holy, loved, cautioned, fed, chastised, and sued. Where not one but two pots simmered on the stove, where the lamp burned all night long. Strangers rested there while children tried on their shoes. Messages were left there for whoever needed them and was sure to stop in one day soon. Talk was low and to the point. For Baby Suggs, holy did not approve of extra. Everything depends on knowing how much, she said, and the good is knowing when to stop. It was in front of that 124 that Sethi climbed off the wagon, her newborn tied to her chest, and felt for the first time the wide arms of her mother-in-law, who had made it to Cincinnati, who decided that because slave life had busted her legs, back, head, eyes, hands, kidneys, womb, and tongue, she had nothing left to make a living but with her heart, which she put to work at once, accepting no title of honor before her name, but allowing a small caress afterwards. She became the unchurched preacher, one who visited pool pits and opened her great heart to those who could use it. In winter and fall, she carried it to AMEs and baptises and holinesses and sanctifieds, the church of the Redeemer and the redeemed. Uncalled, unrobed, unanointed, she let her great heart..." Talk was low and to the point. For Baby Suggs, holy did not approve of extra. Everything depends on knowing how much, she said, and the good is knowing when to stop. It was in front of that 124 that Sethi climbed off the wagon, her newborn tied to her chest, and felt for the first time the wide arms of her mother-in-law, who had made it to Cincinnati, who decided that because slave life had busted her legs, back, head, eyes, hands, kidneys, womb, and tongue, she had nothing left to make a living but with her heart, which she put to work at once. Accepting no title of honor before her name, but allowing a small caress afterwards, she became the unchurched preacher, one who visited pool pits and opened her great heart to those who could use it. In winter and fall, she carried it to AMEs and baptisms and holinesses and sanctifieds, the Church of the Redeemer and the Redeemed. Uncalled, unrobed, unanointed, she let her great heart beat in their presence. When warm weather came, Baby Suggs, holy, followed by every black man, woman, and child who could make it through, took her great heart to the clearing. A wide, open place cut deep in the woods. Nobody knew for what at the end of the path known only to deer and whoever cleared the land in the first place. In the heat of every Saturday afternoon, she sat in the clearing while the people waited among the trees. After situating herself on a huge, flat rock, Baby Suggs bowed her head and prayed silently. The company watched her from the trees. They knew when she was ready, when she put her stick down. Then she shouted, "Let the children come," and they ran from the trees towards her. "Let your mothers hear you laugh," she told them, and the woods rang. The adults looked on and could not help smiling. Then, "Let the grown men come," she shouted. They stepped out one by one from among the ringing trees. "Let your wives and your children see you dance," she told them, the ground life shredded under their feet. Finally, she called the women to her. "Cry," she told them, "for the living and the dead. Just cry." And without covering their eyes, the women let loose. It started that way, laughing children, dancing men, crying women, and then it got all mixed up. Women stopped crying and danced. Men sat down and cried. Children danced, women laughed, children cried until exhausted and wraven. All and each lay about the clearing, damp and gasping for breath. In the silence that followed, Baby Suggs, holy, offered up to them her great big heart. She did not tell them to clean up their lives or to go and sin no more. She did not tell them they were blessed of the earth, its inheriting meek or glory-found pure. She told them that the only grace they could have was the grace they could imagine. And if they could not see it, they would not have it. Here, she said, in this place, we flesh. Flesh that weeps, laughs, flesh that dances on bare feet and grass, love it. Love it hard. Yonder, they do not love your flesh. They despise it. They do not love your eyes, they just as soon pick 'em out. No more do they love the skin on your back. Yonder, they flay it. And oh, my people, they do not love your hands. They only use, tie, bind, chop off, and leave empty. Love your hands. Love them. Raise them up and kiss them. Touch others with them. Pack them together, stroke them on your face, 'cause they don't love that either. You gotta love it. You. And no, they ain't no love in your mouth. Yonder out there, they will see it broken and break it again. What you say out of it, they will not heed. When you scream from it, they do not hear. What you put in it to nourish your body, they will snatch away and give you leavings instead. No, they do not love your mouth. You gotta love it. This is flesh I'm talking about here. Flesh that needs to be loved. Feet that need to rest and dance. Backs that need support. Shoulders that need arms. Strong arms, I'm telling you. And oh, my people, out yonder, hear me. They do not love your neck unnoosed and straight. So love your neck. Put a hand on it. Grace it. Stroke it and hold it up. And all your inside parts, they just as soon slop to the hogs. You gotta love them. The dark, dark liver, love it. Love it. And the beat and the beating heart, love that too. More than eyes or feet, more than lungs that have yet to draw free air, more than your life holding womb and your life giving private parts. Hear me now, love your heart, for this is the prize. Saying no more, she stood up and then danced, with her twisted hip and the rest of what her heart had to say, while the others opened their mouths and gave her the music. Long notes held until the fourth-part harmony was perfect enough for their deeply-loved flesh.
Thank you, Council Vice President. It was beautiful. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge an event that's happening concurrently with this meeting, so there are no city council members represented at it, which is a shame because a lot of us have supported the project and would have been there, I think, otherwise. But at Boom Island, there is currently a groundbreaking happening for what will be the nation's first permanent memorial to survivors of sexual violence, and I just want to acknowledge the incredible work that went into this. This was a, I first heard about it about 18 months ago, and I've watched Sarah Supper crisscrossing the city, going to neighborhood associations and asking them for support, asking businesses for support, asking the park board and the city for support, and gradually watching everybody say yes, to a point that this, they achieved this phenomenal fundraising goal, but maybe more importantly, the process of raising money and raising support and raising community awareness for this project has been an occasion for our entire community to reaffirm our commitment to ending sexual violence and to supporting the survivors of it in a compassionate way. And I think it's been just like a tremendously positive project, and is going to create a real contemplative space that I think raises an important issue and creates space for an important issue within our city. So I wanted to congratulate them on their work. We can't be there for the groundbreaking, but we're there in spirit, and we're looking forward to continuing that work with them.
Thank you. Council Vice President. Thank you. Any other announcements from councilmembers? I don't see any. I have two things. First, I just want to share that Councilmember Ellison and I will be joined with a number of organizations that have helped us craft our two ordinances related to helping renters gain better access to apartments, to rental housing in our city. And we welcome any councilmembers who want to come. That's at 11:30 down in 319. I think that's the right room. And our aides have been reaching out to council offices, and we will also be scheduling meetings and briefings, so if you're in the boat of needing more information, that is coming soon. We're working with the Chair, Gordon, to schedule a public hearing later this month for those ordinances. And then before we leave, I just want to acknowledge that we just had a really painful and violent weekend again, and it feels like a broken record to keep saying it, but I think it's important to remember that it's not normal and it's not okay. I think, you know, our thoughts are with the people in Dayton and in El Paso, but also with our communities here at home that are suffering the trauma of seeing white supremacy act out with increasing regularity, increasing death tolls, and while we watch leaders in our country stand aside and do nothing to stop it, and really to continue to incite that violent rhetoric and behavior. And so I'm so grateful for the leaders that we have here, who I think are giving us so much hope, and, you know, we just are going to keep fighting. That's what we do. And I also just, also wanted to acknowledge that we did have a police-involved shooting over the weekend, and no matter the circumstances, I know that these cause trauma and pain in our community. And we're thankful to the staff that we have, particularly those in the Coordinator's Office and the Office of Race Equity, who do so much work to provide support to our staff who need it, and that those resources are there for anyone who wants to reach out. So thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, seeing nothing more. We have concluded the items on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting, which is Thursday, August 15th at 11:00 a.m., and that's for the purpose of receiving the mayor's 2020 budget proposal. That adjourned meeting will be here in this chamber, and the proceedings will be broadcast. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and we are adjourned. Have a good weekend. Thank you.